Good evening, everyone. I will call the May eighth Cedars Springs Public School Board, Board of Education meeting to order. It is now six forty-five and it provides with me for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, and we have a roll call Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager.
Here.
Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we've established a forum for tonight's meeting. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted and presented. That brings us to gratitudes, and that would open the table to any sharing of gratitudes one might have.
Well, I think as the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, we definitely need to thank all of our teachers. Just, I can't even find all of the words to show my appreciation for our, our, just our teachers, just the, the love that they have for the kids, the way that they pour themselves into our students, going above and beyond academically and personally. There's a lot going on in our world today. It's just so many things going on in the classroom, and so they are on the front line. So, thank you to our teachers.
Agreed. Well stated.
I'm thankful for our arts programs here. We got to do, to go to a theater showcase last week that was awesome with the theater class. We've got choir and band concerts this week. Two of my three kids are going to college for something arts related, so Cedar has had a great impact on them. The third one might be, I don't know, still a sophomore in high school, so we haven't decided yet. But, um, it's just a great, I'm very thankful that we have a program and that it's a good enough program to inspire our students to move forward.
I'm thankful for our ag program this time of year in the spring. I'm sure they're ramping up the tomatoes in the greenhouse. I know we just had the Bring Your Tractor to School Day. So Cedars Springs is one of those cool schools that has a really active ag program. It's a neat thing to be a part of. I'm happy we have a successful agriculture program.
I'm grateful Cedar Sports is in full swing, all of them. May the weather be with us, in all of our games and meets and everything.
I echo all of these. It's amazing to hear just, you know, the wonderful teachers, the programs we have, athletics. It's really, we're a really neat place to be in Cedars Springs, so. Very grateful for that.
Thank you.
Um, sort of piggyback on Tracy's share about appreciating our, appreciating our teachers. We also recognize and appreciate all of the other staff that we have as members of our team. We elect to celebrate all staff during this window of time. While it's a national teacher recognition, we elect to recognize the efforts of our entire staff, whether it be some of our social care team members, or recess coaches, or interventionists, administrators, administrative assistants. It truly does take a village to lift up our, our students and help them achieve the greatest outcomes possible for them in the classroom, academically, but also socially and emotionally. It's really about the team that we celebrate this week.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move forward to our consent items, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. For the discussion portion of our meeting, we'll start off with the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Kent Intermediate School District Operational Budget Resolution with Scott Smith presenting.
So you'll notice that our team is fairly lean tonight. If you look at the agenda, it's really based around a predominant number of budget items. And unfortunately, or fortunately, Mahdi's at a conference workshop right now learning more about student enrollment and student count. And so that's where pupil accounting is the official word, but that's where he is right now. So I'm sitting in for Mahdi. I'll do my best to support the mission.
Well, that gives a tough question.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll do my best. And if I don't have the answer, I'll let you know. And I'll get the information for you, and if we, if it's an item around which we need to take action, we can pause that action and we'll be good. So annually, each year, the local districts in Kent County are asked to review the budget presentation put forward by the Kent ISD. And it gives some merit of local oversight to the expenditure of county funds. Many of the funds that are spent through the ISD are shared funds that are generated by all of the communities that are part of Kent ISD. And so as an oversight opportunity, each Board of Education is asked to review the, the ISD's budget and then ask any questions that they may have, and then also take action on it. So there are four items that are included in board book tonight. So the first is just a short overview of the content. The second agenda, the proposed budget package, is a forty-four page document. I'll go through that meticulously in just a few moments. So maybe in a couple of hours, we'll be moving on to the next item. No, I'll just give an overview. If we have questions about individual line items within that bigger document, we can go through those. The third attachment is the center-based program budget, and again, that's a twenty-plus page document. Getting oversight here, but we can dig in deep and ask, answer any questions that you may have. And then the last piece is just the resolution itself. Either, the board can either vote in favor of the proposed budget or vote not in favor of the proposed budget. And, and then we just have to pass that vote along to the ISD. So, in summary, they're forecasting a positive revenue cycle in the county. So they're anticipating a five percent increase in countywide property tax revenue, and then also a five percent increase in unrestricted state aid. And so again, the budgeting process is much like predicting the weather. It's not an exact scientific type of process, but it is a forecast based on trends and information that's available at this, at the time. So they feel good about overall revenues in terms of growth. So again, the five percent increase on property tax value, and that's general across the county, while some specific districts may be incurring greater growth than five percent, some less than five percent. Overall, as a county, they see a general trend for five percent growth in property tax values. And then also the unrestricted state aid, the money that comes from the Michigan Department of Treasury, just like we receive state aid, the ISD also receives state aid, and they're anticipating a five percent increase there. And then investment income for the next fiscal year is budgeted at two point eight million dollars. So they anticipate getting two point eight million dollars of additional investment revenue in addition to their, the revenue that they get from the property tax and then also from Michigan Department of. Budgets. So then expenses, they're anticipating a two percent wage increase, and then steps, or that would include steps. Two point seven percent health insurance increase, increase to MIPsers, which is the same increase that we're anticipating as far as the retirement portion of the budget. Risk management is, they're anticipating a ten percent increase there, and, and much of that cost is going to be tied up into cybersecurity in terms of cyber threats. That's, that's going to be a bigger piece of their budget than, than current. And one of the things there, you know, the Kent ISD really provides oversight for several districts in terms of their internet access. So the wide area network, the fiber lines that run out of Kent ISD, that would be covered by providing us with some greater measures of risk management as well to fiber. And then item three in board book, talking about, they're showing four point seven, or excuse me, forty-seven point six million dollars of the sixty-three million dollar general fund budget that the Kent ISD has, is made up of grants. So grant funding for all of their various programs, their Great Start Readiness Preschool, their Adult Ed, their Early Literacy Program, Great Start to Quality, Title One, Bright Beginnings. So the ISD generates forty-seven point six million dollars of revenue from grant money. So they rely heavily on grants. And then lastly, the bottom line for the projected budget, they're showing their revenues to outpace expenditures, not by a lot, but by a, a small portion. They're anticipating a budget surplus at the end of the twenty-four fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year of one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred four dollars, resulting in a, as a fund balance at the end of the year of eight million, one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred six dollars, which represents two point eight percent of their overall expenses. So, super high level of, of explanation. Does anyone have any specific questions or any specific wonders?
You actually answered the one specific question I got, which was, what, what was the ten percent increase in risk management? Because I tried to find it, and in the document, I could not find it either. So you, you addressed that. So thank you, with the cybersecurity and some of the other.
That's a, that's a significant portion of increase that all districts are having to face now. You know, when you, when you read about those districts that are, that are shut down with a ransomware, you know, ransomware situation, districts are completely locked up, you know, from a technology perspective. That's not a good place to be. And so the, the ISD has oversight on that for several, for several of us, which, and their safety in numbers.
So at our last regular meeting, you talked about a shared resource for security consultant. I didn't see that in the budget. Is that going to be handled through just shared personnel funding and not in the ISD budget, or is that going to be added to the ISD? Because I didn't see it in there.
So it's, it's somewhere in their staffing budget. I would have to go through their line item, piece by piece.
No, it's okay. I just, it's in there. That is.
Yeah, yeah, they approved it at their meeting on April seventeen.
Perfect.
Um, each district is going to contribute a portion of the funding for the position, and then they're going to pick up the, the balance of that. So that I think their actual expenditure is right around twenty thousand dollars is what they would mind a budget for that position.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions or wonders? Thank you for all that information.
You're welcome.
Napses of appreciation. Next discussion item is our financial report with Scott Smith presenting.
Okay, so moving on, the next item, Mahdi did provide a finance report with some general information containing, and then also talk, went into a little bit of detail about where the state is as far as the development of their budget. He also provided a general fund report as of April thirty, two thousand twenty-three, and then a bond, a budget spreadsheet. So you can get a sense of where we are relative to our bond expenditures. So year-to-date, where we are in terms of the overall cash flow, we're in a healthy place. So, but I, but I first want to just talk a little bit about where, where the state is in their budgeting process that puts us in a spot where we can feel a little bit better about projecting ahead for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so if, if you recall, the state budgeting process is really the, the blending of three different proposals. There's an executive proposal that the governor's office puts out. There's a proposal that the Senate puts on the table, then there's a proposal that the House puts on a table, puts on the table. And an opportunity to spend the day last Tuesday at the Capitol. And it was interesting because various members of the representative body were coming in and out of our, out of our meeting. Each would spend about thirty minutes with us and just kind of sharing what their primary responsibilities are, where they were in terms of specific initiatives that they were focused on at the moment. And then also we were able to get some insight around the budget. And, you know, across the board, I think if you look in general, each, each proposal is showing an increase to the overall annual student foundation grant that we receive. But then each proposal is looking at some of those grants, some of those one-off elements of the budget with slight, slight different moments of emphasis. So we anticipate that there will be some flexibility and fluidity coming across the board. And there's overall a high level of confidence that they're going to be able to reach consensus and get a, put a budget on the table sooner versus later. There is some hope being expressed by the governor's office to be able to sign at least a school aid budget by their general meeting. They have a general meeting at Magno Island the first week of June. But Senator Brinkes, who's the House Chair, said, when asked about what's her part on signing the budget at Magno Island, and she said, well, it's really more about getting a quality budget than it is about signing the budget at a quality location. So I appreciated that. It's about taking the time to get it right versus hurrying through the process and, and with a budget out there that maybe does less than I know. But the third slide of the, the financial update that Mahdi provided gives kind of a general, an overview how each budget is slightly different. So you'll notice the foundation, the record, the proposed foundation allowance increase for the, from the executive branch is four hundred fifty-eight dollars. The proposal for the House is three hundred sixty-six dollars per student. The Senate proposal is five hundred fifty dollars per student. So they're close. At the end of the day, there's the, the overall foundation allowance that we get, there's going to be an increase within that band as likely. So, you know, the, the governor's, the executive recommendation is a five percent increase. House recommendations a four percent increase, the Senate recommendation is a six percent increase. So they're close. There's some room in there for them to dance. The House budget is attractive because they're proposing a thirty-two percent increase at risk funds, which would be significant for districts with higher populations of schools with poverty. And so that would be a positive thing. Another favorable, uh, shared element of the conversation around budgeting next year is, you know, each body is recognizing a need to increase funding to help offset the costs for special education services for districts. And so the governor, the executive proposals for a thirteen percent increase, there, the House proposals for a fourteen percent increase, and the Senate proposals for an eight percent increase. So again, somewhere in there lies the number, but it's positive to see that each, each budget, each budget is proposing an acknowledgement that the costs to provide special education services for students is greater than that of a, a generalized student. The universal free lunch is a common theme for each, for each budget, and that will be a positive. Other things like, like transportation, offsetting some of the costs for transportation is something that they're acknowledging. The districts with heavier transportation costs, like Cedar Springs compared to East Front Rapids, for example, our transportation costs are significantly more than theirs. And so what they're, what the budget is, what they're trying to do is acknowledge that and help provide offset costs for, or offset revenue for districts that have higher transportation costs. They don't have a unified position around that yet, but each, each group is, is wanting to acknowledge that difference between districts. It's really important to recognize, you, you can only spend a dollar one time. And, you know, we also know that while the economic conditions are favorable right now in Michigan, and that the school aid fund is healthy right now, it's cyclical. And it's not a matter of if there will be a downturn, it will matter, be a matter of when. And so while there is revenue to spend now, there are a lot of voices that are very mindful that a tone of precaution would serve us best in the long term as a state and as a public, a body of public educational institutions. And so that's an interesting balance, right? People want to, you know, representatives want us to put money into the districts. Fortunately, there is that voice of reason to say, hey, we can't spend all of this money right now. We have to be, we have to be mindful that there will likely be a downturn in the economy at some point in time in the near future. So that's an overall emphasis on the, the general fund as far as student, student revenues come. They also are acknowledging school safety, mental health priorities, and then other priorities. So you'll see that the executive branch, the governor's budget is for three hundred million dollars over two years in terms of school safety. The House is matching that. The Senate did not have anything identified as far as school safety, but they did build into their mental health component for thirty-one AA proposing three hundred and ten million dollars over a one-year span. So instead of three hundred million over two years, what the Senate is saying is let's push those dollars out all at once, give districts more money upfront to help offset some of those costs. And again, these are all just projections. Early literacy in the governor's proposal and in the House proposal is three hundred billion dollars. Nothing in the Senate proposal, and then mathematics teaching and learning. So they're emphasizing, they're recognizing the need to increase the quality of math instruction in the state. The governor is proposing a thirty million dollar revenue item, and then the House is also proposing a thirty million dollars. That's not in any way going to fix the challenge, but it would at least be seed money that'll start moving some initiatives forward as far as we really have that. So that's kind of where we are, just with a general view of what's happening in Lansing. I anticipate getting some greater clarity from them here in the, in the next couple of weeks. And then I anticipate a budget earlier in June and later in June, later in June, uh, this year, which will be helpful because, you know, we have, we have the month of June for our budget presentation and then for you to approve the budget that's presented. So it's always good to know what your revenues are before you project a budget. So we'll see how that goes. So any questions on the, where the state is in terms of their budgeting?
I'm super excited to see universal breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, I think you all know.
Yeah. Been pushing for that for a long time, so I'm super excited to see that.
That would be a positive.
I'm just wondering, if, let's say they don't have the budget, you know, in the state ready to go by June. There's no penalty for us to submit the budget later than June, right? So we could potentially submit, we can submit the budget with us for review after June because there's no penalty, right?
No, that's where it's a little wonky. We still would have to project a budget.
Oh.
Yeah.
We use our best guess.
Yeah, it's not ideal. You know, it's forecasting the weather. Bring a raincoat and a parka, snow boots and sandals. You just, you do your best. It'll be someone, you know, we know enough about where all three, you know, where all three bodies are positioning themselves. So the bulk of the budget is, is, we, we have an understanding. We could, we can do a pretty solid projection, and every district in the state will be in that same position. And so all of those great minds with, you know, years and years and years of experiences in, in K-12 budgeting will all be coming to the table and sharing their best estimate. And when you're not sure, you have a tendency to budget more conservatively than you would, you know, budgeting in a, in a less conservative or more extravagant position. So we'll, I'm confident we're going to be okay with that. Yeah.
Twelve budget amendments, okay.
That's right. That's right.
I would say that this looks pretty flawless. I mean, all of the House, the Senate, the executive branch, they seem like they're pretty. Pretty much in line, you know?
Yeah.
It shouldn't take much, but I would think, or I do, but the years passed, it's been way anymore.
Yeah.
All over the board, so.
It's interesting to note, though, that you've got a single party controlling all three branches. There's the voice in the other party is acknowledging the need to be, you know, be supportive of programs, but they're also being very careful about, you know, we, while we have significant amounts of revenue available to us now, we need to be mindful of, we need to be cautious. We can't just spend it all. Because there will be a time when we don't have those revenues, and then in these districts with, in a place where they've got to make cuts. And that just makes, that's not the best thing. Other questions about where the, where the state is? Other than state confusion. So for us, as far as general fund, there are, there's a document in board book with some really small font. We are nearing the end of the fiscal year, and so it's reasonable to think that we have done a significant amount of our expending over the course of the year. So we are, if you look, so sorry, dancing around my screen. The original budget for revenues, you'll see that we've received forty-five million, one hundred fifty-three thousand dollars projected, and the amended budget was for forty-six million, forty-five thousand dollars. Our actual revenues as of April thirty was thirty-two, one oh seven, thirty-two million, one hundred seven thousand dollars. And so we're tracking. We still have two more months of revenue to come in. And then as far as expenditures go, Mahdi provides a summary of that. Our total expenditures to date are forty-three, excuse me, total expenditures budgeted forty-three, nine eighty-one. The revised budget or the amended budget, total expenditures for the year were forty-six, oh fourteen. Our current to date expenditures as of the end of April was thirty-two million, nine hundred forty-five thousand. And so we're tracking fine with expenditures. And then the projected fund balance, again, starting the year with twelve million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand. The amended amount end of year was eleven million, five hundred fifteen thousand. Where we are right now with fund balance is at ten million, six hundred forty-seven thousand. So we've still got two more months of revenue fluctuation, but we're still tracking to be in a, in a positive light as far as expenses go across the board. So any questions on general fund? So any questions on general fund? Uh, expenses?
So it looks like he's projecting to be short uh a little bit. We're just gonna make up the difference with the fund balance.
Yeah. Yeah, and um, S R funds will be a part of that. I can bring that up as well. Um, and then the last, the last uh inclusionary piece that Marty provided was the uh bond budget spreadsheet. So that just shows where we are, what projects have been uh budgeted out um for this month. Uh, you'll see that um at Cedar Trails. So uh, the upcoming expenditures to be paid in May, there's no anticipated expenditures at Cedar Trails. Uh, we don't have any projects going on there right now. Similarly, at the middle school, we don't have any projects there. So uh, there won't be any uh expenses going out for that. Um, seventy-two thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Cedar View, again, just some of those punchless items that we're continuing to move forward with. Uh, four thirty-three thousand dollars, four hundred sixty-five at Red Hawk. That's really where the bulk of our construction, the bulk of our projects are right now. That's why Red Hawk is showing a higher level of. Expenses for um anticipated expenditures for the month of May, uh just because that's where the bulk of the work is. Um, and then it breaks down um overall uh across the, the different projects. Um, where we are as far as um bid goes, uh twenty-eight million, four hundred forty-six thousand dollars. Um, is the actual year-to-date. Um, our pending expenses uh for the month of May. Are uh eight hundred forty-five thousand, uh essentially, and then actual, on an actual basis. It's uh twenty-nine million, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that's series one. Um, and then uh he moves into a series two, uh just showing the revenues. Remember, we haven't started spending from series two yet. Uh, and so that's why there's no expenses coming out of the series two budget. We're still buttoning up the projects from series. Any questions on that?
It was clear, thank you.
So that is.
We'll move on then to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four handbook revisions and tis the season. To do this evening.
So um, the handbook revisions uh before you this evening um is uh really just an opportunity for you to. Review each of the documents in the redline version. We have plenty of time to uh walk through these documents. Uh, there are very few changes to um, uh changes of significance as far as the. The overall content of the uh documents go. Really, the changes are um further attempts to. Uh, provide some uniformity from level to level. Uh, so for example, um, you'll see, you know, there's a preschool handbook. That uh covers all of our preschool programming. The uh elementary handbook covers. Our students on grades kindergarten through fifth grade, so it would uh represent Cedar Trails. Beach Elementary School as well as Cedar View. Um, the middle-level handbook would uh cover our students. And pertain to the students in grades six, seven, and eight. Uh, then there's a high school handbook that would be uh. Thanking to our students grades nine through twelve, new beginnings handbook recommendation. And then lastly, uh, excuse me, an athletic handbook that also includes a code of conduct. And then uh, lastly, there's a campus kids handbook recommendation for the year. Each document, uh, we really tried to provide you with a clean uh way that was easier on the eyes to see the proposed. Changes, so you'll see a red line strike through. Anything that's uh proposed as a change is highlighted in green. So we really tried to make the, the document easy for you as members of the ward to uh, to just. Cruise through and, and gain an understanding of what, what the handbooks were trying to accomplish. Um, I don't, uh, other than uh Mr. Simmons who's here tonight, I, we don't have any other administrators here to respond to questions. I'll do my best to respond to some general questions today, but really tonight is just more about an introduction. Uh, and then we'll spend some time for the next couple of meetings, really digging into any questions that you may have. Around specific elements of the handbooks.
So I have a, uh, uh, there's a missing period.
Okay.
It's in the middle-level handbook, page twelve. Um, under the cell phones and other electronic devices, the very first line, um, they must remain in their locker. Should be a period. And then if a student is feeling sick, right now it reads as they must remain in their locker if a student is feeling sick. So, thank you. And then my yearly, um, I, the dress code, while it's better than some districts, uh, I think is still too strict.
I had some questions about the preschool handbook, but I can, I can wait to ask them too. I'll, I'll just mention them, but you. Don't feel like you have to respond right now. I just was curious, I think it was page three or four, check here. Um, just some things that were not required anymore to be accepted into the program. Some doc, having to do with all the documents that they needed. So um, proof of residency was one of um completed child information record, that was another one. I just was curious if the, the thought process behind that was just making it as easy as possible and trying to seem. Streamline the number of documents needed. Um, so that was one question. And then on page fifteen. Um, having to do with access to school records that parents have, it was taken out completely. And I just, it just caught my attention, just kind of wondered about that. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of nineteen seventy-four assures parents and legal guardians of public. School students the right to see their school record, and it goes on, and it was just taken out, so just wondered about that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So I had a few, and I'll, I'll send them to you, so you don't have to write it down.
Okay.
But just for discussion, so everybody else knows they're coming. So in the handbook, the high school handbook, page twenty-six and twenty-seven. Three days limitation to change your schedule, but my concern was, or my wonder was. There's many students that can't get appointments with counselors and with parents the same. So we, I would like to hear more about the timeline of getting the students through schedule and with the staff assignments. And how that chan-changed up aren't gonna be, how that works.
Okay.
Short and then like. So my other wonder was a personal curriculum. So how do we market, um, because it's not in there compared to the graduation requirements. To the curriculum guide. Uh, let's say from just pushing the student to what seems to be. Um, the next science, the next science, the next science, if we went off this branch to this science, or off this branch, if it's a tree to this science. I don't know how some parents would know that those options are available. So that's kind of a marketing or a informational thing to parents. And new beginnings, um, while that's a different program, the handbook, and I know there's gonna be more changes there, but there was. Lot, a few things.
Yep.
That's, and I'll email that to him, so those writers.
For the high school handbook, did we remove the dress code policy or remove some places?
Uh, it moved down into another section.
Yeah, thirty-six. Had to change that.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't change the content of the, of the dress code, just moved it to another section of the document.
Thank you.
Huge thirty-five.
I know when I started reading through it and it was all crossed off, I thought, oh, well, Shannon might be happy.
We will see that again.
Perfect.
All right, moving on to the roofing bids for Cedar Trails and the high school.
All right, so in your packet, uh, there's a bid document from Triangle Construction. And um, the document uh contains a, a cover sheet and then um. Uh, an award analysis, uh, and then some general recommendations. So um, overall. Uh, what the recommendation is, is to award uh the bids uh from two contractors. So uh, one is for the, for the base bid, um, and then there was another for alternate. So um, in the bidding process, we have a kind of a, a base, uh, a minimum of. Uh, work that we are striving to accomplish uh within the budget. And then uh, we put alternates in uh to help uh maybe accomplish some things that are important. But not necessarily critical. And it's, and, and so uh, when you're looking at the, the bidding process. It's difficult to uh project uh with specificity how those bids are gonna come in. And so sometimes you break it down into having, this is the base, like this is what we, we have to have at minimum. Uh, and then depending on how the bids come in, uh, then we can also add some alternates in along the way. So uh, their recommendation is to award a bid of uh eight hundred sixty-nine dollars, one hundred, or I'm sorry. Eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, one hundred and fifty. I'm gonna say that a third time. Uh, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand. Uh, one hundred and fifty, uh, eight dollars to uh CNI Building for their base membrane roofing bid. Um, and then they're uh recommending awarding uh for our alternates. Um, for both Cedar View and the high school, uh, a bid of um. Six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars for versatile roofing. Uh, to do their, the alternate bid on the roofing. So the total award. Um, as far as the contractor cost is one point five uh. Million dollars or one point five four six million dollars and then um. Some additional pieces uh along the way. The total bid um recommendation is for. Uh, one million, nine hundred eight thousand dollars or nine hundred and uh eight. And then uh, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, but that includes the base bid from the contractors. As well as an allowance for new roof drains and connections. An owner allowance of uh additional proactive maintenance. So while we're up there doing roofing. There were some of the working projects that gives us an opportunity to do some additional maintenance uh for fifty thousand dollars. And then just general contingency off uh allowances um of uh. Two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars. And that would include uh the construction. Uh, the general contractor construction support, uh, insurance permits, safety cleanup, those types of things. Uh, dumpsters, barricades, field staff, the owners, uh, the construction contingency, so that the wiggle room that's. In place for the contractor side of things, but then also the owner contingency, uh, which is a three percent number that's. Kind of our wiggle room uh within the budget. Um, so that just gives you a little bit of flexibility in case. Uh, things uh vary slightly from the forecast. And then the design contingency, which is. Uh, from G M B's side of things, uh, in the event that uh they, they missed something, they realized we've had to add, we had to add. Uh, an element of uh, um, maybe uh. Drainage or something like that on the roofing project, they missed that design, we would have to go back in and do more design work. And this way we're acknowledging that there might be a variance of two percent uh from G M B that we would be including in the. Uh, in the overall pool. So um, you'd hope that none of those contingencies come to play. And at the end of the project, you have money left over, um, that would be able to then be used in other projects. But at least it built, built a little bit of a cushion um for us as a meaningful into a project like this. So.
And it's just using bond money?
Yeah. Yep.
Contingency is asked each of my changing the question.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, usually it's um, I thought it was interesting that um, usually whatever, whoever gets the base bid. Gets the best is gonna likely come in and for the, for the alternates as well. But in this case. You know, the both company, we use on a regular basis and so, you know, we, you, at times you have the opportunity to cherry pick. Um, and allow or, you know, award a specific bid to one contractor. And then another component of the bid to another contractor. And that helps us get the best overall value for our investment.
It looks like the, maybe the original budget was two point five. The original budget in form, so it came in well below that. That's good.
Yeah.
A good sign.
Yeah. So between the original budget and the, the actual award, it's, you know, five hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Good.
Yeah. But if you remember where we were when we were doing the bidding or the budgeting, you know, we were in the midst of a global pandemic. Lot of, lot of vulnerability in the market, uh, there were really products, those types of things. Now, we're gonna offset that, you know, some products are more expensive than what they were. Uh, but overall, um, in, in many cases, uh, the bulk of the materials are trending back to a. A normal position or pre-pand, pre-pandemic position. Labor is another. Uh, another thing, but at least as far as materials go, that seems to be trending in a positive way for us.
Alright, thank you. Moving forward, we have the high school cafeteria furniture.
Alright, so um, this will be a good bid day. There were ten vendors that submitted bids. Um, uh, not all uh bids were submitted uh for the exact same model. Uh, or brand of furniture. So um, of the ten vendors that submitted bids. It represented four different brands of furniture, Albatross, National Public Seating, Palmer Hamilton, and then AmTAM. And um, you know, each of those, it, it's similar depending on, you know, what kind of home appliance you're going to buy. Uh, you could buy a Whirlpool washer or a Kenmore or a G E. It's different brands have different strengths and um different benefits. Uh, but it was good, we felt good about having the, the ten vendors uh submit bids. Our recommendation is awarding the Duel Corporation, the base bid in the amount of. Forty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. And the alternate number one in the amount of six hundred ninety-five dollars for a total award of fifty thousand. One hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Um, some factors to be, to consider, while if you look overall, the Duel bid was not necessarily the lowest. Um, it was on the lower side of the array of bids that were projected. Um, but one thing that was key for us. Duel was the low bidder for the Palmer Hamilton tables, and that was our preferred table uh as far as. Um, a brand goes, and it's really based on uh their durability and their high-quality. Uh, reputation in the marketplace. Um, the tables come with a fifteen-year manufacturer warranty. Um, and Duel is a highly reputable uh school furniture company in West Michigan. So um, that's the, that, the recommendation uh for the uh cafeteria tables. And these will be paid for out of our food service fund, um, out of our. We've got a fund balance uh in the food service fund and we gotta pay that down. So we see this as a great opportunity. To invest in the, the overall student experience at the high school.
Any questions? We're seeing.
And some uniforming, you know, and that's one of the things that we're, we're excited about as well, which just increases the overall quality of the experience. It's neat, uh, I was at the high school today. It's neat, uh, I was at the high school today, um, and had a chance to be a part of. You know, I was in the building one day, uh, when lunch was going on and um. It's a, it's a, it, I know it's may may not sound um rational, but it's a calm space, like. It's it's, it feels good in the cafeteria, students have enough space. Um, it just, it, you know, you know, every day when I'm there, it just feel, it's a buzz, but it's a, it feels very healthy. Um, and so just the table, the the furniture will really help us uh take that to the next level for students.
So this will replace all of the tables that are there?
Correct.
And where are the old ones?
So I would have to check on that. Uh, I know we'll repurpose as many of them as we can, so um. The different buildings as appropriate, um, but I don't know the specifics on that question. We're gonna find out this in the. Like, yeah, very well.
Still the same chairs?
I'm sorry?
Chairs?
Uh, right now, same chairs. In your work on that, make sure you have some chairs for larger people.
Okay.
Uh, next, the Kent Intermediate School Board Association election. Scott has the information.
Yes, so thank you. So um, the Kent Intermediate School Board Association is not. An association that is voted upon by the, you know, by the residents of Kent County. Uh, the way this board is put together is each individual school district that is a part of the Kent County. Um. Places their vote uh into consideration for the overall selection. Of the individuals who serve on the Kent uh County Area School Board Association. And so what this resolution is for is just to identify um what member of this body. Will be representing the Cedar Springs Public School Board of Education. Uh, at the uh meeting when each individual district submits their vote on the candidates. So I don't, we're not voting on candidates, you're not being asked, consider individual candidates tonight. Uh, there are two open seats for the Kent ISB Board. Um, fortunately, they've got three individuals who have submitted interest. So we will have to look at individual candidates and make a decision, but um for uh quite some time, there was only one candidate. Uh, expressing interest in two vacant seats and um, and so that was a little bit uh interesting. Uh, but fortunately, a couple of other people stepped up. So really tonight, uh, what we need to have is uh just someone from this. Board, this body um volunteer uh or uh be willing to represent Cedar Springs Public School Board of Education. Uh, at a meeting um in early June at the Kent ISB and um. Be the representative voice of this body. Now, uh, I know Matt has done it in the past. Um, it does not have to be a member of the board, you can um have me do that, uh, and I can either be. Your representative or I can serve as your alternate. So I'm happy to do either. Um, it's really not a big deal. I don't mind going to that to that meeting, so. Don't feel pressured, um, and I will represent you um based on what we talk about in our next meeting.
I am available, and I selected June, excuse me, June Fenn, that's sunny, so I am available and. More than happy to to go and Scott can be my alternate.
I think we'll take you up on that. Everyone's not, I hope they're playing it at school to work as an inspiration. Yeah, thank you. Alright, our last discussion item is superintendent evaluation artifacts.
So again, this is just, I um, provided um a variety of resources for you to look at. Over the next few weeks, um, um, really around the the body of work. Uh, that I've been doing over the course of the year, not just work that I've been doing, but work of the team. So some different artifacts that I've included. Um, is uh some, um, so every Monday morning, uh, we have what's called a huddle. And our district admin team comes together, um, and we discuss. Um, you know, upcoming meeting items that are uh before us. And we talk about uh specific things and we just discuss as an admin team. Um, so all of those minutes, we keep a running tally of that, that huddle conversation. Um, and so what you've got there is uh our home notes from back, uh, starting in. You know, the first part of July twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two to our huddle notes from this morning. So it's just a running tab of things that we discuss, um, it it's in a PDF format, so you can click on any of the. Uh. Documents that we've got that are uh included as links, but it just gives you a sense of things that we're focused on and things that we talk about. Uh, weekly basis. Uh, then I also included our MGM agendas, so that's the body of work that represents all of the. Meetings that we've had uh in professional growth for our members of our administrative team, so MGM stands for Meeting of Great Minds. Uh, and so that's another collection of resources that you've got, um, and and also included in that MGM document is. Uh, links back to all of the resources that we shared with principals, all of the meeting agendas, all of those types of things. Just for another collection of artifacts for you to consider. I included a copy of my calendar. So you can see uh how my time is being utilized in different meetings and different uh groups that I'm a part of. I did include a specific um MGM agenda, so uh from our last meeting in April. Uh, just so you can look at to see, you know, what that, what that individual meeting experience looks like for our principals. And then I included uh just the slide deck from the budget forum that I did a couple of weeks ago with staff, just to give a sense of. Um, you know, ways that I present materials to uh to our team and to our uh community. So no action needed for tonight, uh, it's just another opportunity, you know, it's a hobby, you need a really big bowl of ice cream, one scoop at a time, so. Trying to provide some information uh rather than uh bit by bit, rather than being a a big.
We appreciate that.
The huddle notes are two hundred and four pages this year. It's the update.
There you go. And then we'll be, we'll keep reading and then we'll have our final conversation in June sometime. Alright, that brings us to a portion of the meeting where we would entertain public comment, and if anyone would like to address the board for three minutes. We would be listening to your comments, we wouldn't be responding right now, but do we have anyone allowed to address the board for their? Going once, going twice? Okay, public comment will stand forward. We'll move forward then to our action items for this evening, and first up, we have the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Kent Intermediate School District. Operational budget resolution, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved to support.
Any discussion? Having none, trustee Bowser?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item B, high school cafeteria furniture, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved. Part.
Any discussion?
Clarify, it's Duel, that could be thousand one hundred sixty-four forty-four. And it will come out of the food service fund balance, alright, yeah.
Thank you for that note. Any further discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item C, the Kent Intermediate School Board Association Election District Representative Resolution. We would be entering Matt Schaffner as our primary. And Scott Smith would be the alternate. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Last action item for this evening is the roofing bids, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion or clarification?
Uh, just that it's coming out of the the Bob. It is one million nine hundred eight six fifty-seven. But we're voting on.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to the portion of the meeting where for our communication and for the Board of Education. I do wanna note to the board that we did have one school board address that was scored at CSR accounts, blah blah blah. And that's gonna be forwarding to all of our inboxes at one time, so whenever anything comes into that, it's back. Um, we'll all get that same time, so it's not the forward and the, you know, how that's been going. So it'll be, it'll be straight out. So that'll, that'll be certain. Maybe part of anything like that?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll receive, potentially receive two different uh emails from community members. Uh, or staff members. One would be to your individual CSR account, and then the other would be to that um. The Board of Education.
So sometimes we might get two, but if it just went there, then we'll all get it. Okay, alright.
On that communication note, I did receive some letters uh that I passed along, I need them, she'll get out to you guys, so. Take that or have a heads up for that.
Alright.
Um, included in board book, I do have a research officer report that was provided uh from Deputy Rowe. And so I included in that uh for you just to review. Uh, and then I also wanted to follow up, uh, we received several emails. Last weekend uh in regard to um some uh social media posts about um. The uh driver tractor to a school event and the um some confusion and questions around a a tractor parade. Um, I responded to each of those individuals who reached out initially, just providing them with. An overview of the decision-making process that went into uh the work ahead of time. Um, so that, you know, there was a a meeting uh between Jen Haberling and Brett Willett. Who is our um egg science teacher at the high school and our FFA advisor. Uh, each of our elementary principals were involved in that meeting last uh August. And we also had uh members of our facilities team there, uh, just to look at the logistics of what it looks like to have. A parade on campus. It's not as easy as uh just, uh, you know, hey, let's have a parade. Um, and so, you know, they looked at some options historically, uh, if you went back, uh. You know, really prior to the twenty nineteen, excuse me, prior to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Uh, when Ray Ray Burne was the FFA advisor, they did two uh driver tractor to school events. Uh, for high school students, but they only had one parade on campus. It wasn't until the twenty nineteen, twenty, excuse me, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. That uh Brent Willett added a second parade in the spring, so there was a fall parade and a spring parade in eighteen nineteen. Um, and then uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty happened, uh, and there wasn't, we did a fall parade. We didn't do a parade in the spring, there was COVID. Um, and then in twenty uh twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, they uh had two parades scheduled, um, it it honestly caught, it caught me off guard, I didn't know. That the second parade was happening until the week of, uh, because it hadn't been uh worked through that communication channels or anything. And so that's really what uh motivated us to say, hmm, we need to think about this and and do things with some greater thought. Um, and so that's why we had the meeting in August of twenty twenty-two. Uh, everyone at the table agreed that for many reasons, that FFA would. Uh, still, you know, you can still do the two days of driver tractor to the school day, but there would be one parade. And that one parade would occur in the fall. Um, looking at the logistics of both uh windows of time. Uh, that the group really thought that having one uh tractor parade on campus in the fall was. Was uh a good decision, uh, we could do it on a half-day associated with the walkathon. Uh, so there wouldn't be a lot of disruption to the academic uh schedule during the the course of the day. Um, it also um gave our families an opportunity, you know, many of our families work during the day. And so uh by doing a parade during the day on campus and then doing an after-school event in spring. It would give families an opportunity to come together and support the FFA program that culvers off-campus after school. So we saw that as being a positive. Um, another uh factor of, you know, having just the one parade. Is, you know, all of our field trips, any of our assemblies, we don't repeat those during the year. Um, those are one-time events, and so we really um didn't see, you know, we would do one parade in the fall. We wouldn't do a second parade in the spring, um, because we wanna provide our students with an array of experiences. Um, rather than providing them with duplicate experiences. We wouldn't ever have. Uh, the same assembly come in and and do that assembly twice in a building. We wouldn't, you will filter it for the same location twice. Uh, over the course of the year. Some other challenges around doing a a spring parade. Um, involve the testing schedule, you know, we've got students that are testing in various buildings and and uh throughout the day in the spring. And so that was a little bit of a uh kind of conflict that we wouldn't have in the fall. Um, and then uh lastly, just the logistics on campus. You know, when we minimize or when we reduced our flow-through of traffic on campus to just that singular route from. Uh, Northland Drive through the high school, uh, past Cedar Trails and Beach in between those two buildings and then. Past New and then uh transitioning around to the high school. The the traffic on and that stretch of roadway is significant at the end of the day. Uh, if any of you are ever on campus, uh, while elementary buildings are not dismissed until, you know, three forty-five essentially. There will be people lined up waiting to pick up children starting at two o'clock. Um, and and for a variety of reasons, they're on their way back from work. Uh, maybe their school's of choice and and live in another space, and so it's it's, it's difficult for them to go home and then come back and go back. So, you know, there's a lot of traffic on campus at the end of the day, uh, if we have a spring athletic event. Uh, either at the baseball softball complex or at the track, that's even more campus or more traffic on campus. And so just the safety logistics of having a parade on campus really uh created a situation where it just wasn't feasible. For us to do a a, do either a singular parade or do a second parade in the spring. Um, and so clarified all those whys uh to the people that sent their emails in. Um, four people responded um saying, oh, I didn't realize there was a parade in the spring or in the fall, that makes good sense, thank you. For following up with me. Um, I also reached, you know, offered to meet with any of the individuals that sent um. Emails into us, no one uh, no one took me up on that as well. I did have a great meeting today with uh Mr. Willett. And um. Uh, just clarified again the why behind, you know, what we talked about, what he talked about in the meeting in in August, and I think we're really on a good. A good posi- a good page. Um, we all understand the value and incredible benefit of the FFA. Uh, program and the hard work that our students are doing, incredible efforts of of Mr. Willett. Um, are recognizing that maybe there are different ways to communicate uh than going to social media, because social media at times is. Uh, not the best way to to sharing information. So, but I think we're in a great place, uh, we had a great conversation today, and we look forward to the next, the next event.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, we'll wind up cleaning and um, May twenty-second, we will need to have a special meeting for the. Okay, we'll move on to planning and um May twenty second, we will need to have a special meeting for the. Kent ISD voting. On that we want to vote for, because those things just came in. So we'll, if you can mark down your calendars. Then um June twelfth is our regular meeting, and we do have a conflict with a family wedding. Scott has a family wedding on June twenty sixth. So we will be looking at June nineteenth for that second meeting in June. If that works for you, pretty much for everybody. April's like, whenever.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll.
I I appreciate that. My, can't believe my son didn't consult with me. Right, and he were planning the wedding, but they're getting there on Sunday uh out in Denver, so.
Nice.
Yeah, so we're excited about that.
So we've got that.
Can you send uh an update?
About the wedding or about?
Yes. About the wedding.
Yes.
Now I feel bad. Yeah, can you send an update?
No, I will.
We're gonna need truth of the wedding related.
Yeah, there you go.
So, yeah, definitely unfortunate, and she said yes.
Okay, and I think having no more business for us, we will stand adjourned at seven fifty six.